The flag of the United States of America. And we serve a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, made visible with liberty and justice for all.
Gee, you may have to do an additional pretend oath of stabs. I have none. Okay. If you move on down, any motion on the consent agenda?
I will be approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Motion made second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move on down to the access staff.
I hope she is, the one who wants to go for me, that's fine. She's got things to do.
All right, Rhonda, go ahead.
I just wanted to give everybody an opportunity to ask any unanswered questions. I read the article in the paper. And it was obvious to me that some people are not clear what's going on over here at the rescue. So I just wanted to give everybody an opportunity to ask questions. Let me know what any concerns are. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Could you just give a short synopsis of your, um, your dog catching business?
Like what you told me today, Rhonda, you know, about the kennels?
Yeah, yeah.
All that stuff. I think that's what Mr. McGowan wanted to know about. That was his primary concern.
Understandable.
So maybe, maybe address that.
Understandable. I have a rescue over here, not a shelter. I do everything I can to move dogs in and out of there as quickly as humanly possible. We only have two outdoor kennels. And generally speaking, I'm running the same dogs through there and letting them know. A lot of these dogs have been in my kennel so many times. If I have to go somewhere, I will let their owner know. They're in the kennel, go ahead and help yourself. And they go in there, get their dog out, shut the kennel and leave. But I do not house dogs long term. We do have a dog right, right now that's in the front yard that has been there a while because she had a bad experience up at the prison and she got paroled out of there for bad behavior. Anyways, I'm, I'm working on trying to figure out what to do with that gal that got paroled out of there. But other than that, I find foster homes, I find homes. Generally speaking, dogs are not even there a full day and they're on their way. I have a couple really good solid foster homes here in Lakeview and they're usually willing to help me because I really don't deal with vicious dogs. So.
Yeah, there were one comment that reported about the signs on your fence that said beware of dog.
That's the dog that came back from the prison. Her name is Thelma and she went up there with a great disposition and encountered some not very nice individuals that are being housed up there and came back with a terrible attitude. But my plan moving forward is we're trying to work with her with the training book that I got to do the training of the class up at the prison. But I'm also planning when I get time, hopefully soon, to meet with the lady that is now running Hunter. She offers free dog training classes. So I'm going to try and visit with her and see what she thinks that we could do with that dog. But we also, besides the beware of dog signs, we have put up really tall fences. So she can't get out. If, if anybody comes over, there's no, I mean, she does get real mouthy out there, but there's no way she can get out of that fence and hurt anybody. So if anybody else has any questions, I'm glad to answer them. No?
Okay.
Thanks for having me.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Rhonda.
You guys have a good day.
Okay, access taxi, taxi for all access lower down families?
So I'm, Trish, I'm the manager here in Lakeview for access taxi. I want to go ahead and, um, give you what we're doing on this coming, uh, the 7th of May. Um, I did get the owner Dennis Utley, um, to join the Chamber of Commerce. Yeah, it's got the front on it. Um, I am very aware that the senior center does go to Clamette and generally speaking, uh, they go during the week, which puts families that have jobs during the week in a position where they can't take the time off to go over. Um, Dennis and I worked really hard coming up with the prices for what we're offering for the community. Um, we came to Lakeview because we had a contract with the, with the traveling nurses. The nurses that we were contracted to had left, they'd gone home. Um, I don't want to leave Lakeview. There is definitely a need for my services out here. Um, the community is welcoming me with open arms and I don't want to have to leave. Um, what we're planning on doing is a three hour trip to Clamette Falls. It gives the community opportunities for shopping for more types of formulas for their children, different types of diapers. Um, online order pickups for those who can't go do their shopping. We're going to facilitate that also. Um, we're also doing something fun along with it. We're going to be doing a Papa Murphy's run, which everybody loves pizza, so we figured we'd throw something good in there. The problem that I'm running into right now is the cost of fuel is astronomical. It has gone up so much. But in order to make it affordable, we've lowered the prices on what we would normally charge to go over to Clamette to do these types of runs. Uh, the senior center is aware of what I'm doing. Um, I spoke with their transportation director, um, a couple of times. So things that they can't facilitate, I can jump in and help them out. Or vice versa, if it's something that I can't facilitate with my service out here, they're going to help me out. Um, previously in the years before, prior to Clamette, with transportation, the senior faculty stepped in and helped to guarantee these small programs that we offer to make sure that we continue to offer those with a minimum number of seats covered. So that we can offer, if there's only two people that want to go, well, we're, we're not going to tell them no. We're going to still take them, but there's still overhead and costs out of that. Uh, we're also looking at doing an Altura's Run. I know Altura's is a lot closer, offers a broader shopping spectrum as far as the fruits and vegetables and the different types of fruit and stuff that people are looking for. Um, we have Tina who's willing to sponsor some low income senior citizens um, who want to go on the trip. Um, and also some families. Uh, we just got the crisis center involved. I have a charter account with them. They're going to be helping people in crisis also with our services and hopefully for those that want to go over and do their shopping, but they can't get everything that they need here. And in the meantime, uh, even losing my contract, I am going to have to go out and do a part-time job so that I can continue to stay here in Lakeview to service the community. Um, the few months that I've been here have absolutely fallen in love with this town. I've even moved my knees out from Pennsylvania. So, um, I, I'm asking the city if there's a chance that they can help with the first run out there to help sponsor us so we can cover the fee for the driver and the fee for the gas.
We're going to have to look further into this to see if we can do this or not.
Okay. Um, our first trip is scheduled for the 7th. Um, I think once people see that here is a good thing and it's an opportunity for them to, and even if they don't want to go to Clamette to go shopping, say they have something on the 7th where they have to catch the train that night to go up Portland or down to Sacramento or something. And that's costing them $50 to go over there, where if they were to call me individually, it's $240. And that's, that's a lot for this community to pay that price to go over there. So I'm trying to make an effort to improve the independence here to go other, outside and go places and do things.
Generally, the city doesn't sponsor those kind of things.
No.
Um, because there's so many people that ask for that kind of thing. But Rotary, Seroptimus, Elks and Isocolumus could all chip in. And I'm sure they would. I know, I speak with the Isocolumus, we could probably come, come up with some money. Uh, but I know the Elks and Seroptimus and Rotary, if you did a presentation to them, they would be glad to, to chip in some money.
Because I'm going, I know. Um, I actually had an meeting with Ryan over at the Eagle Pass today. Um, Ryan and Angela both don't want me to leave because I'm helping them also. Um, I know the sheriff is super excited and has been posting, there's no reason to be drinking and driving out of town. Um, I do have myself and one other driver, I do have a dispatcher. Um, I'm looking at getting some more drivers so that we can service everybody's needs. Uh, we're also going to be starting to work with basin medical transport also out here. They want to be, make sure that, uh, medical transport as far as transport link is capable of being out here on an immediate basis other than waiting 48 hours if somebody has emergency.
Thank you.
Okay. And then if you have any further questions, uh, my phone number, dispatch phone number is on the bottom of the flyer. So you can reach out to me.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
Do you have another copy of the flyer?
Yeah.
Let's move on down.
In fact, I have some if everybody would like one.
Please Chase is asking for a donation. Um, please be looking for swim pass.
I think there's one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
They're going to put it in the duck.
I have no idea.
Yeah, yes. I think so. For the duck race, right? For the duck race, yeah.
Yeah, I think they're going to put it in the duck.
Yeah. I'd make a motion that we, um, donate one family swim pass to the Rotary for the ministry. One second.
Motion made second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, letter nuisance officer.
You get that though?
I want to refer that down to the nuisance officer update.
Okay.
Block party, block of pork.
Hello? I have someone to speak to. Yeah.
Well, my name's Melody. I was actually supposed to come and talk to you guys a while ago, despite the sickness of dog around. Um, I am the certified recovery mentor for Lake County. I have 21 years in option recovery. Um, I would like to put on a block party at McDonald Park. I am hoping that the splash pad is done by then. Um, so, um, if not, there's, I have, I have a plan A, plan B, plan C. So the other plan would be to, because I know that, um, swim, swim team is a big thing around the weekends during summer. And I was thinking we can block off the road from the Marius Building that way and we can put it up over there, right? In the road because they have campers and all kinds of stuff out there. Um, I want to have a DJ, DJ from Clamette. And, um, we're going to, I've got the duck tank, um, from Paisley. They're going to let us use the duck tank and I want to put teachers in the duck tank. This is going to be like a fundraiser block party, you know? We're going to, you know, sell baked food and, you know, just kind of have fun and show the community that we're here, that there is an option besides having drugs or alcohol onboard, you can still have fun without it. Um, so I'm just hoping that you guys say okay.
So the date is set for July 2nd?
July 2nd.
No matter where you have it?
Yeah.
That may change.
Right.
The conditions.
Right.
So are you asking to have like, if it's at McDonald Park, some, a street closed also or?
If it's at the park, no.
No.
No, no street closures, nothing at the park. The only place I can think of that I would need the street closed would be if it was over here. Um, the other plan is over by the high school, by the soccer fields in that area or the fairground, where I'm not talking wrong yet regarding that because that is like plan D or E? Because I know that's far out, right? Because we have a lot of families, we have a lot of people that do, are in treatment, that do go to the recovery center, that walk. And so that's a little bit far out, especially in the heat and all that stuff. So I'm trying to, I think my thought McDonald Park would be great as long as this splash pad is up and running and everything's done with that.
Yeah. And that's your best thing, okay? Uh, quickly, I, do you have a timeline for the splash pad?
Um, I can tell you that we've ordered everything. Well, even as long as like construction hasn't started or, you know what I mean? If it's still just a little pool, then, you know, we can probably see if the pool can be filled. I have my CPR training, I'm a certified CPR constructor. So there's that. Um, I just, yeah.
Are they, they're not going to still get in pools this year, are they not?
No, unfortunately. Because the, we were going to do, the time, the way the time was looking, we were going to just wait for the groundbreaking of the splash pad and start construction. So that it wouldn't, we weren't going to open it. Because we have the kiddie pool that, that people are using. So we did, um, the age group was from kindergarten and under was free.
Well, I think it's a good idea. I think we should, we just, I would just move that we approve the block party, but you just keep us updated, um, so we know where, where it will be and whether we need to okay block and have to agree that set up before, you know, like at least in June sometime.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I didn't mean that.
Oh, you mean, that's okay.
I'll say. I just added to the law table.
Hospital, street. Vote in favor?
Aye.
For the hospital, street.
All right. I think it's great.
Thanks, Travis.
Thank you.
Um, Lakeview High School Nony Run?
Hi, everybody. My name is Miss Yellwus and I'm Lakeview High School Owner Society co-president and co-chairman for the Nony banner sunflower for Nony Run. And this year's going to be our fifth annual run and we schedule it for Sunday, June 5th, 2022. And if you don't know about it, we usually go off of her love of sunflowers and we choose a quote every year. And this year our quote was her heart bloom sunflowers, so she would always face the light. And we usually, this is one of our non-negotiable events that we put on at the high school for our, our society, mostly because Mrs. Schillenberger really likes this event and it's really well attended. And we're having it the day after graduation. So it's going to be even more attended by people that come in. And we're going to be crossing Highway 395 to get to the pool park, which is actually the start of the Nony Trails. And that's what I have here. And we also, we're going to see if we can have those public bathrooms open at the public pool, the pool park. See if we can have those for runners who are finishing the race.
Um, have you contacted the sheriff's office?
Sheriff's office, I talked to them and they sent me down here.
Well, just wanted they know that I'm doing this.
Yeah, yeah, they sent me down here.
Okay. Does that make a motion?
It is the same route as last year.
Pretty close, the same one that they did the last time.
Yeah, they've, they've done it. Yes. First. Quite a few years.
Yeah, this is the fifth year that we're doing it and this is the same route as last year.
I'll make a motion that we adopt, uh, the Nony Run on June 5th, uh, for Lakeview High School.
One second.
Motion made second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Today?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Lakeview High School Senior Parade?
Hi, my name's Macy Warda and I'm a senior at Lakeview High School.
Uh, my name's Lani Deck and I'm also a senior at Lakeview High School.
So we're just talking about the parade on June 4th. It starts at nine, well, we start at nine, it starts at 9:15. And, um, we will be crossing 395 two times on, where is? Yeah, see right there on, um, third and then you come around on the second. And then, um, we like this tradition and I know the community really likes when we do it because they get to see everyone and witness all the seniors. If they can't make it to the ceremony, they'll see us coming through. And I know all the seniors like being involved in it because it's really fun to personalize your vehicle. And it's kind of become like a little tradition whenever we can do it.
Is that the one the parents did last year on their own?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, ODOT has the form and then sheriff's going to sign it and then each one, each member will get a copy.
Okay.
I think it's great. Motion to support the senior parade on June 4th. Starts at nine?
Yeah.
Nine?
Right, okay, yeah.
One second.
Motion made second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Good.
Mayor, could I ask a Lisa question?
Yeah.
Are, are you going to have any kind of crossing guards over there, like going across 395 when the bulk of the runners come through?
Yes, we're going to have the, see if we can have the sheriff with the state police, I feel, is what I was told, uh, block off the roads and stuff.
Yeah, because they got those kids with, you know, all that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Rachel Wade, Dr. Williams, he called just a little bit ago and he needs to reschedule to come and do the few guys.
Request duck crossing sign around the circle. You know?
Gavin made fun of this though. I'm ready. Um, so there's little baby, uh, little babies that are crossing the road and people are feeding them sometimes on purpose.
Well, they have been doing that for years, but isn't that a common thing?
No, not anymore.
Sure isn't.
I remember. Yep. Raise off the duck.
Um, so I'm requesting that we put some signs up saying, um.
Duck crossing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I absolutely, I hope people obey it because I walk around this circle quite frequently and I know that does happen. You know, when the blood is running through their little baby, just moving.
Mm-hmm.
Very cute.
So I'm, um, just wanting to be able to buy the sign and put them on.
Yes. So you have one on stop drive and one on the other?
You have two.
And on the right? Yeah, so four.
Oh, yeah, four, those two.
Yeah. I will be allow F crossing signs near the circle.
Second. Motion made second, vote in favor?
We add peace to that.
Okay.
Okay. That is dear everything.
Clear crossing. Clear crossing.
If you move in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, Michelle.
Okay, so, um, the town would like to, um, begin doing GIS mapping and we would like to start it as soon as possible so we can access, uh, our public worker, or our public works director's brain before we do this. Um, because he knows pretty much where everything is just by memory. So, um, the cost is going to be 70,000 and we will be using our, um, uh, our, the, our COVID money that we received to pay for that. Um, we may, um, pay for half this fiscal year and half for the next fiscal year. But, um, they're ready to go and we just need approval from the council to move forward and sign the contract.
Would you get out of that a map, a big map of, of all the pipes and?
Pipes, manholes, um.
Well, you can't call them manholes anymore.
Those things we kind of live on.
Okay.
And, um.
People.
The stormwater system and all of that.
Yeah.
Yes.
It is everything.
Right. Now, this will, this would just be in the town, right?
That's correct.
Or, or will it be like all the pipes that we have even? Because don't we have one that goes down south, nine, into the south, half south, right?
What we do, um, and I think that they're going to be, uh, um, drone taking drone information from that, but mainly focusing on the town, city bound, town boundaries.
The town boundaries.
Yes.
I would move we approve agreement with Anderson Perry and Associates for GIS services. Have number 214-02. And I second that because I think it's important that we give that out on an, in the system.
Okay.
And we also need you to approve that it's COVID funds. Pregnant? We also need.
From Harvard?
Yeah, that it's COVID fund, funds that we're going to be using.
Can we do that? I, I just don't want to make sure. Add a 2 and 9. Is that funding will be provided through the COVID brand. COVID brand. And what else I can add?
And motion made second, vote in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And 214.
Then can we get rid of some of the, the old things we have up here? Like all the maps and all that stuff? Keep all that stuff?
Yeah. Yeah.
We need to keep them until, um, I think we should always keep them.
Just always keep, put them somewhere else up maybe.
Yeah, and then everybody will have access to the GIS mapping. Um, so, so what, like the, um, county where you can go in and look at the GIS on their mapping system, you'll have something similar to that. And we're, we're also planning on, uh, um, combining our smart meters with all of that technology. Um, so, you know, removing to start layering everything so it can be accessed from anywhere. In the cloud.
Not working, so is your expense sign?
So I put that on there because it was old business and I just wanted to let you know that the signs have been ordered, they just haven't been developed yet. They were ordered to write. So we're just following up on that. Um.
The transit log, lodging tax, when I filed the request from LCP?
Hmm?
Of?
So in your pocket you have the resolution 965, um, where the first transit lodging tax was granted to LCP. The second time the 25,000 was granted, I used it, I had a line item as a budget and didn't require paperwork, um, because it was through, it was during COVID. Um, and so, and I, I also did that for the Lake County roundup for 30,000 and I just line item budgeted it. Um, but that, that, I'm going to have to do a manual bump on that because I really should have required paperwork. So now I'm getting it back on track. Um, and, and I have included in your packet the ordinance for the TLT money spending, which is 861. And if you go to section 15 for the administration of the TLT funds, it's, uh, its main use is for tourism promotion and tourism related facilities.
Which one, Michelle?
It's section 15 on ordinance 861. I think that's 861, hang on.
Mm-hmm.
So I, um, it. The question becomes, um, LCP is requesting 25,000. Um, we aren't allowed to use the TLT funding for, um, administration salaries, um, budget deficits. Um, just a second, I'll tell you what else is exempt from it. So it, I think what, what, uh, needs to happen from here is that, uh, LCP, um, needs to be specific about what they want to use the 25,000 for. And I revamped. about what they want to use the twenty five thousand for, and I revamped our TLT, uh, grant application, this is draft form, only draft form. So you have a copy and anybody else who would like a copy there right here, but it is draft. So, um, council's gonna need to approve it. Um, but I, it's more specific as to, um, you know, what, what applicant is wanting to use the money for. And it's having reports, which Ginger was really great the first year, she reported often, so.
Right.
Um, so I've got what to expect from the TLT application, the eligibility. Um, the ineligible projects and expenses, the approved scope of work, terms and conditions. When the applications need to be turned in, how they're qualified, they go to a town council work session first. And, um, there is at the very, the very last page I've got a, or second to the last page, I put in a review for. So it's scored and, um, you can discuss the scoring in the work coun, the work session and then it comes to council for approval. So I, I feel like this is a much more, um, total application. And it explains, um, what we're required, what our objective is and that ORS is requiring us to award grant money. Um, so there's, there's two things that need to happen, um. We need to approve the TLT application so that LCP can, can apply or whoever would like to apply. Um, and then, um, and then move that along through the process.
We need, we need to take twenty five thousand and the thirty thousand out of the budget as a line item and revert everything back to this.
Okay.
If we approve the new, more contrast, I think that has to be actually done every year.
Yes, it does. So that's, that's my part, that's me.
Yeah.
Um.
But also they have to report back to us on progress and everything.
They do. And that's in, that's in the grant.
Yeah.
So it has dates and everything, so it's always clear about what needs to happen and then we can mark calendars and like we keep up moving through the process. I, I, I don't want, um, I don't want the roundup or LCP to feel like, um, because I wasn't managing this right, that they get, um, penalized. So I'm gonna leave that up, up to you because I, it, it is my issue. Um, and it's something that fell through the cracks, um, that, you know, wasn't brought up because we were doing it for a couple of years, so kind of got lost in the shuffle, but
it's, um, I think we just need to set up a work session to go over that application as soon as possible. Get that looked at and the rest of the paperwork that we want. Well, I think that we need to treat everybody equally. That if we require LCP to put in application, roundup needs to be put in an application and showing up here and giving us reports also.
I agree.
I, I think, and whoever applies, you know, whether it's the car show or whatever, you know, we need to do that. Is there a written report that you need to submit at the end of the, you know? That's what I remember. And in just glancing, just glancing through this, I'd rather see this done sooner than later. Because right now you're saying you, they can't, they'll put an application in in July because we've already missed the April deadline. And then by the time we look at it, are we looking at September? I don't want that to happen. Like it needs to happen before.
I agree. Which is why I'm like, I don't want them to be penalized because of my mismanagement of the, of the program. So, um, I can schedule a work session next week. So we can expedite, expedite this through, which is why I gave you a copy so you can start reviewing it and making corrections. Um, if any, or additions, if any. Um, and then we'll get it approved at the next town council meeting. And then I think we should make an exception for, for those who have missed the deadline. That we, we make an exception, an exception, exception application.
Would Tuesday the third work for everybody?
For what?
For.
Oh, oh, I know, it's May, I know. It doesn't sort of, um, what year is it?
Or, or Wednesday, either one of those, Thursday and maybe you're Friday.
Well, Tuesday, um, we have that, uh, we have to get the first, the senior representative and four, five. Tuesday.
I do.
Does that fill it up?
Well, it's another organization that we're putting out. But Wednesday would be okay for me, that first one.
Wednesday, at like five o'clock. Getting cleaned up and everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wednesday, the fourth of May?
Four.
Okay. And so with the work session, we'll be able to have also the public presence, the norms, that they can ask questions and be a part of the involvement, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Four o'clock or five?
Which work for you guys?
I'm, I'm okay with you.
Okay.
I'm here, bye to o'clock, sweetie.
Bye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything after that, Ginger?
No, thank you. I think this is great. Awesome, thanks, really, honestly.
I, I do apologize.
Oh, I, I get it, thank you.
Try to push this through as soon as possible.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Okay.
I'll be here.
Move on down to the, this is all for, Michelle.
Okay. So I met with the commissioners, as you know, and, um, they would like to give their guy a chance to get started and um, wanted us to do like a ten, a twenty, and a thirty, like a three-year progression forward. Um, I've been researching and calling around to see if the town might be able to just take on the town uses our own officer. And we can do that. Um, my idea was to have, um, spotlight him, take that on. And he is very busy. Um, there are other times where he won't be very busy. So, um, we would be able to have him at least on a minimum doing it like two to three times a month for us. Um, there would be no additional charge to the city for, uh, salary, he would just work under.
What do you do with that?
Yeah, yeah.
All quality.
Um.
Okay.
That's all a lot of what work is.
Yeah.
Hmm. So we're looking into a program called I Work. Um, for software on that, I don't know their, they have schedule demos. Um, and, and, um, our ordinance as I reading it, but I have, I have to double check with I for you, but, um, I can assign the work without having him just run it in. But I need to double check on that because then he can start doing it right away. Um, but the, the question goes to you. So I've done a research, I've talked to the commissioners. So we've got two separate proposals as to what we want to do. If we want to go with the Lake County, then I'll need to put an official letter together, say.
So we'd share one with Terry? No? Just not sure.
With the county.
County.
Hmm. Yep, that we would share with the county, that we would, uh, do a, a gradual increase, um, for, uh, like a three-year contract. Where the first year we would pay ten percent of the county's co-enforcement officer wages and twenty percent and then thirty percent. And each year we would, as we pay for that, we would also give more time for the person to be here in Lake County.
That was, that was my next question, how often would we see the co-enforcement officer?
Well, I would think like ten percent.
In a town. Which is?
I don't know, one day a month?
Four hours.
One day every two weeks.
I would, I would like.
Ten percent.
Put that on our agenda for the work session and discuss it a little bit more. Oh, yeah, I get that, yeah. And then two percent is like, uh, forty hours. Four hours. Let's, if they have a day.
You get what you paid for. If you want to commit, you know, we originally asked for thirty-four percent.
Yeah, yeah.
And we offered to come in, if the thirty-four percent was too steep.
Yeah.
We offered to start lower.
Yeah.
And.
No, it's also.
We're offering and we have to decide what we want to do.
Right. But al- also Commissioner Albertson, he wasn't here and I, I, I want to make sure that I'm saying this correctly, but he was afraid that if we came in at our thirty percent, that it would take away from two, the time spent in the county. Um, and so that's where the ten percent, twenty, thirty percent came from because uh, there's so much work to be done, we didn't want to over, like flood him. Um, so I just don't know what the best choice is, but at some point we do need to get back to like county commissioners out of respect or, you know, waiting for us to make a, a decision that, that has taken a long time.
I, I agree, Sandy, put it on our work session on.
Okay.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay. Go through that also.
Okay.
Okay. Little league contract. Do you want to just, Little League?
Um, we contacted Little League, they will go over the contract at their board meeting on the twenty. So we're in our meeting on the twenty-sixth, so be back with, and come in. Okay, so they won't be able to get back to us in county twenty-sixth because they gotta go through their board.
Okay.
This season might be over, but. This season might be over, yeah. That is a valid contract.
Okay. Okay, dog ordinance eight seven seven.
So, um, made the, uh, we got a hold of Rhonda Dial, it was right issues here. Um, the vet clinic, um, weren't able to get through to them, uh, but we certainly did try. And then I was reading the ordinance. And the sheriff's office does our dog, you know, like if there's something that needs to happen with the dog or you can call the sheriff's office. So rather than having the town manager be the dog or be the officer.
I don't think that was ever.
Well, it was missed, it was missed already in your.
It was said, and we said, we didn't want you to do that.
Right, and you said that was.
Well, that's. I thought that was prior.
So I just put in there that the town council assigned the Lake County Sheriff's Office to handle our dog enforcement. So if that's not how you want it, it's on that first page towards the.
In fact, that's in the contract that they do enforcement for us.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, um, I went ahead and did that because it made the most sense, but if you want to change that, then, um.
This isn't gonna affect the vet.
They also work with the vet clinic too, ma'am.
Right. Can I take it on the, like the four point three where we had the question before about the kennel? If, I guess I'm interpreting that Rhonda really doesn't have a kennel because she's.
A rescue, a rescue facility.
It's a rescue facility, and then I'm also interpreting, because it talks about a household not having more than four dogs. It's not talking about a commercial business.
That's correct.
You know, it's only talking about a household. And I think that was the biggest area where all the questions were, you know, is that right, Mike?
Well, I guess my comment last time was, you know, we just want to make sure that if the, if the ordinance impacts any existing operation, whether it's Rhonda's or whether it's the veterinary clinic.
Yeah.
They have a, a right to, you know, they, they, they can tell you, hey, I can't, as I read it, I can't do my business, so if it doesn't impact anybody, then.
We, and we did post it for our comment and we received nine, but, and we have.
Yeah, I read through the whole contract with Molly today and.
She'll be fine for her.
She doesn't like to have kennels here. She'll get a dog, just like she said, that's why I wanted her to come tonight, today. And she'll get a dog and, um, put her, put him in, in, in the, it's not really a kennel, just in the yard.
Just a holding pen.
Yeah, just a holding pen and, and, uh, they'll pack him up the next day. You know, it's, it's not like she's holding him for four or five days or whatever, so.
As I, as I remember from last time, the concern, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but the concern was that it said there shall be no ordinance within half a mile of the town, no kennel within ta- half a mile.
Right.
Of the, and so the question was whether or not the boarding operations that the vet has would, would violate that. As long as the council's clear, then, and it doesn't impact.
Well, then it's also the number of dogs that you've been having in a household.
But that's.
Right.
It's a nursery ward for dogs, right?
The boarding, the ward. Facilities, a kennel.
It talks about household instead of commercial businesses, I think.
But the boarding facility is a, is a kennel, the vet's boarding facility.
Right.
It's not a household.
Right, right, exactly.
So I think that's the distinction of the law, because it's commercial, it won't be affected.
It's a distinction. Right, it says no household shall have more than the four dogs in the boarding facilities.
Do we get a motion on that?
Yes, I do.
Oh, I, I.
You want what?
Okay, just let, I mean. We have two seconds. I move we approve, uh, ordinance number eight seventy-seven by title only. Second.
Seven.
Make, motion taken second, if you'd prefer.
Aye.
Aye.
I hope we approve ordinance number eight seventy-seven. An ordinance related to drug control in the towns like you enforcing certain restrictions and regulations on canines including licensing requirements, establishing adhering proper process, repealing ordinance seven five one and declaring an emergency. That'll say.
Can you motion second, if you'd prefer?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Make sure the sheriff's office gets help into this and. Each one of them. All right. We got, we got Shannon resignation letter yesterday. So we'll be advertising in the paper for a council position. And it goes till twenty-four.
Twenty, twenty-four?
Two thousand twenty-four.
Yes, oh, he has turned that, he's just turned it. Okay, okay.
He's turned to.
Is that a?
Twenty twenty-four. Yep. Okay, is there any public comment?
Yes, please. I'm Ginger Casto and I'm the executive director for another ten minutes. Civilic Community Partnership, excuse me, I'm recovering here from a cold. I, thank you very much for the process, I really appreciate that. And that's gonna be good for the TLT funds, I'm happy about that, we'll all be happy about it. I just wanted to let you guys know that we are between COVID and theater repairs and that sort of thing. We're finally back in the, in business here with getting some, uh, venue activities that are, we're gonna draw some good folks and, and it'll be kind of exciting. We, uh, on May fourteenth, we have, um, a revival band for, uh, the Kingston Trio. And one of the members actually played with the Kingston Trio. And they have a slide show. And they have a slideshow that tells the history and the story of, um, the Kingston Trio and their importance in, uh, starting rock and roll and hooting nannies and all that good stuff, so we're kind of excited about all of that. And so that's, that's the beginning. Um, I, let's see, what's today? Tuesday, yesterday I met with, uh, Bob Hackett, and Bob is the executive director of Travel Southern Oregon. And we've been talking for three years about cowboy poetry gathering here for Lakeview, and we're finally gonna be able to do it. So we're gonna do the first, um, annual Lakeview Cowboy Poetry Gathering in October. We have tentative, we have tentative dates of Friday, October seventh, and, uh, Saturday, the eighth. And, um, we don't have our headliners, we don't have all of that put together, but between Travel Southern Oregon and Travel Oregon, they're gonna help us with promotion, but we are gonna need a lot of help with it, and we've already got really good ideas, I'm not gonna, I, what I want to do is come periodically, obviously, and give you updates about what's going to happen with it. But we'll be having what they call a gear show, which is basically, um, people, you know, vendors that come and they have lots of, um, fun gear and artwork and that sort of thing, uh, that we'll be promoting along with the poetry and poetry, music, lots of fun activity. And we'll be spreading it out around town, the theater will be where all the headliners are, um, and we're gonna hope to involve our restaurants and our, uh, other establishments in providing venues for, um, part of the activity. The Chamber of Commerce is gonna partner with us here, and we're gonna, we're back in the saddle again. So I'm really excited about that, and we've got some other things coming up this summer that I haven't got solidified for some concerts. Um, we have to work around our renovation schedule because we're hoping to start the renovation process towards the end of June, which will probably go through until the weather gets bad again. Uh, we might get finished with it before then, but we're gonna be a little sporadic about, you know, what we're gonna be able to do just according to the schedule for construction, so I just wanted to let you know that that's all happening. And finally, we're gonna cross our fingers and knock on wood that we don't have any more restrictions or illnesses that's gonna keep us from moving forward. So that's all I've got, thanks.
Were you gonna put on the battle, battle of the band?
Well, we've been talking, yeah, yes, I would love to do that, we've talked about that. Um, Travis Riddle is driving me crazy, he wants to come do something, which is great. And, uh, I'm pretty sure that Cleve Brock and his one-man band is gonna make an appearance at some point. But we'll, we're gonna try to do more of the revival band stuff too, I mean, I think that's, that's pretty fun. We're open to doing other things, we are, oh, I forgot, we are also partnering with, um, with their, about the, um, the motocross event, we're gonna be showing, uh, on any Sunday at the theater on June eleventh. And, um, we're helping them promote that by partnering with them about that. And my sister and her husband, who own Vance and Leathers, which is a very prominent, uh, racing motorcycle leathers company, uh, they are national sponsored for the National Organization for Arma, and they're, um, sending lots of swag and some things for us to raffle off, it'll be fun, so, that's all I hope.
And you are serious that you're done in five minutes, right?
Well, I'm gonna have lots of help, there's some people in this room that might help.
Who's going to, um, do you know who's gonna replace you yet?
No.
When Sonny and Leon used to do the cowboy poetry,
Yeah.
um, they had a lot of kids involved, and I was teaching at Flush, I had a lot of kids doing cowboy poetry, and if you would put that out to the high schools,
That's great.
you'd have an amateur half hour after the show and, and have some of those kids.
No, that'd be great, they'd be good openers.
Yeah.
They'd be good openings, you know?
Yeah, I think it would be, but I think you could just, it would be tough.
Right.
Any more public comment? Here it is, move down. Uh, we don't have any other matters, staff comments?
None.
Okay, council, do you have any comments? I have none. All right, so we're adjourned meeting at, uh, five fifty five.